See. Ms. Gittens, can you join us? I don't want to start without you. Oh, now it's too quiet. Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. This school board meeting of June 22, 2021 is now called to order. The time is 6:02. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes invocation, pledge of allegiance, two items under recognitions, public comment, one item under Board Office, which is good cause. As the Chair, the one good cause item is approval of the contract for professional services with Capital Strategies Consultant, Inc. As Presiding Officer, I find there is good cause to add this one item to the agenda. Consent action items, which includes 19 items under academic services, which two are good cause. Dr. Savage, please provide an explanation for these two items.
Yes, Madam Chair. The consent items under academic services, H18, approval to amend the contract with the State of Florida Department of Health, original contract, number LE200, amendment number two. This item was added at the request of the Department of Health. It updates the current contract with e-Verify information. Item H19, approval of the contract between the State of Florida Department of Health and the School Board of Lee County. This item was added because the contracts for six school nurses start on July 1, and this is the last meeting prior to that date. It was submitted by the deadline, but due to a glitch in the Board Doc system that is being addressed, it did not move through the approval process. And last but not least, consent under Human Resources, J6, approval of administrative recommendations. Again, this is one of the last meetings currently scheduled until the late July, and so these administrative recommendations are done to not cause any delay so that these folks can begin their work.
Thank you. As Presiding Officer, I find there is good cause to add these two items to the agenda, which was under academic services. We have seven items under Board Business, six items under Human Resource, which one is good cause? Dr. Savage just spoke on that one. As Presiding Officer, I find there is good cause to add this one item to the agenda, two items under Information Systems, eight items under Operations, four items under Public Hearings, and four items under Other Business. Were members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Ms. Vaughn?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. And please record your vote. Seven zero, motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Gittens will introduce her guest for the invocation, after which Ms. Patrika will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Gittens, please introduce your guest.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Pastor Russ Hurst, I'm going to take this so you can hear well. Pastor Russ Hurst has been a minister since 1996. He started as a youth pastor in Singapore, where he ministered for five years. Then he and his wife were missionaries in Central Europe and also in the Asia-Pacific region for eight years. He has traveled and ministered in over 50 countries and pastored congregations in Chicago, Los Angeles, and Boston. He is now the lead pastor of my church, our church, the First Assembly of God in Fort Myers, Florida. He comes from a ministry family. His grandparents on both sides were pioneer missionaries in Brazil and Tanzania, which is where both of his parents were raised. He spent his formative years in the Samoan Islands and then finished his education in Springfield, Missouri. He has a bachelor's degree in Bible and absolutely loves being our pastor. He's married to Carrie, has two children, Jonathan and Jordan, as well as an adorable spoiled Boston terrier named Jake. And we are so pleased to have him here tonight and welcome him to our community and our church community. Pastor Hurst, will you please lead us in the invocation? Everyone, please stand.
Could you go to maybe that mic right there? We'll be fine.
That one.
That.
Oh, I don't care where.
That one.
Yes.
Thank you for this privilege.
It's not on. It's on.
Here we go. Awesome. There we go. I just want to thank you for this privilege. And Gwenna, especially, thank you. It's a privilege, and Gigi as well. Just hearing my own bio read, I just realized, man, I've had a crazy life. But I can tell you one thing. I've been all around the world. I've been to almost every state, hundreds of cities. And I'm going to say, we've been here six months. This is an incredible community. I really, really mean that. And so it's a privilege to be here. Thank you for all that you guys do, for the tens and tens of thousands of students you represent. I just like to pray a prayer of blessing and pray for God's wisdom. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the chance just to be together tonight. Lord, I thank you for the cumulative effect that can happen, Lord, where it literally touches tens of thousands of lives. So, Lord, your word tells us that if we ask for wisdom, that you will give it to us abundantly. And so, Lord, I pray for our school board, pray for those that are here representing to be voices, for those that are the most important in our community, for our children. And so, Lord, we pray that you would just help to find a unified voice that people that have different levels of expertise would be able to speak, but together, that there would be some sort of way that they would be able to do the best that they can and do what's right, simply because it's right for all of these kids. Lord, we just pray in Jesus' name that you would help us, and we just invite your presence to be here. And we just thank you for the privilege, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you so much.
Ms. Patrika?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for being here today, Reverend Pastor Hurst. Okay, next is recognitions. And Ms. Fisher, please welcome the 2020, the 2020 and 2021 New Teacher of the Year.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. I would like to invite Dr. Helen Martin, Assistant Director, to please join the recognized employees at the lecture. The School District of Lee County is proud to announce the formal recognition of the 2020 and 2021 New Teacher of the Year. The School District of Lee County New Teacher of the Year Program recognizes newly certified instructional personnel for the significant contributions they make to their school, their students, and their community. The program honors one representative annually as Lee County's New Teacher of the Year. The nominees are individuals who have demonstrated exceptional skill and dedication in their performance on the job, thereby earning the respect and admiration of students, teachers, administrators, coworkers, parents, and the community. A selection committee comprised of community members, principals, teacher representatives, and district administrative staff reviewed nominations to identify, interview, and select finalists for the new teachers of the year. At this time, the school board and the superintendent are pleased to recognize the following 2020-2021 New Teacher of the Year. 2020 Valerie Donovan from Rehman P.C. Page Elementary. Congratulations, Donna, and thank you for your work. And also for the 2021 Teacher of the Year, Jennifer Ortega from Lehigh Acres Middle School. Good job.
Wow, this is some good stuff here. Ms. Giovinelli, please welcome the 2020 and 2021 Apples Mentor of the Year.
I would like to invite Dr. Helen Martin, Assistant Director, to please join the recognized employees at the lecture. And she's there. The School District of Lee County is proud to announce the recognition of Apples Mentor of the Year. The School District of Lee County Apples Mentor of the Year Program recognizes Apples mentors for the significant contributions they make to their peers, their school, and their district. The program honors one representative annually as Lee County's Apples Mentor of the Year. The nominees are individuals who have demonstrated exceptional skills and dedication in the performance of their mentor role and their work with new teachers, thereby earning the respect and admiration of students, teachers, administrators, coworkers, parents, and the community. As a selection committee comprised of community members, principals, teacher representatives, and district administrative staff reviewed applications to identify, interview, and select the finalists for Apples Mentor of the Year. The school board and the superintendent are pleased to recognize the following 2020 and 2021 Apples Mentor of the Year. For 2020, Benjamin Strauss from Mariner High School. 2021 Allison Delude-Kerner of Harms Marsh Middle.
Okay, thank you so much. And congratulations to each and every one of you. We are so proud of you, and you just keep this district going. We're going to take a brief pause so that if there is anyone that would like to go ahead and leave, we're going to allow that to happen. Unless you really want to spend the night with us and enjoy us, you're welcome to do that as well. Okay. Don't run too fast.
I couldn't get in my computer, so I'm sending you this. But I told you already today that I was sending. Mine was L8. I just sent it to you.
Okay. Moving on. Next on the agenda is public comment. Ms. Dupree Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. However, I would like to point to Board Policy 1.11, subsection 5D2, which addresses public hearing. If you are here to address the board with regards to items in public hearing, you may only speak about the public hearing item during the public hearing time. Otherwise, you may not speak about it during normal public comment. If you completed a blue card, please put it in the basket provided in the back of the room. If you need a blue card, they are located in the hallway outside of the board. The rules concerning public comment are posted in the back. Public comment will be made from the microphone in the back. Please be advised that the board does not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the board chair, Ms. Jordan, may address concerns or the assignment of concerns or requests to the superintendent. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback to the board. Personal attacks on individuals or abusive language are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or display of temper are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from chambers. There will only be one warning. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20, two if there are 30, and one if there are 31 or more. Per Board Policy 1.11, the maximum time allowed for public comment is one hour. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. We encourage you to address the board as a whole versus individual board members as they act as a collective board. Please state your name prior to making your comment. I will call you five speakers at a time, and please follow the staff's directions when lining up. Madam Chair, we have 12 speakers, so that will be three minutes per speaker.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my left side that would like to speak who has not filled out a card? Is there anyone on the right side? Ms. Dupree Bruno, please continue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, will the following individuals please line up? Edward Drass, Corey Die, Daniella Die, Robert Roper, Stephanie House.
Good evening, Lee County School Board. My name is Dr. Edward F. Drass, M.D. I want to welcome Dr. Savage to his new position, and I'd like to make some comments. First of all, I was happy to get here early so I could get a speaker card tonight. That has not been possible the last two meetings. I am aware that there have been some comments that some of the board is tired of hearing from us. I hope that's not the case, because I think you'll be hearing more from all of us. I'm speaking as a Christian. I'm not a special interest person unless you want to consider my special interest, God's people. I have three issues that I have addressed in the past in order, in any order, it's not important. The critical race theory teaching should not be taught in this school district. Gay and transgender issues don't have a part in the teaching of our children. And the 1619 Project, which attempts to rewrite history, should also not be taught. The, what we want is parents, taxpayers, and members of this community as the truth from the board. So when I find issues in the minutes that I can't understand, I have to address them by email, I would like a response, please. I will relinquish the rest of my time. That's all I have to say. But remember that there are eyes watching, and we all have a vote in this county, so please keep that in mind.
Hi, everybody. Daniella Die. I wanted to come in today to talk about a few of the items that are on the agenda. I see that there is a Perkins versus Secondary Grant, and it brings in welding consultants, agricultural equipment, automotive equipment, engineering equipment, and grant specialists to handle all of these things. And I am super excited to see that we're actually moving forward with some of these technical abilities for the children. I was wondering if that's going to be available for the 2021 to 2022 school year and where the descriptions are and how the parents are going to know that these programs are available. There's another item on the agenda that's actually very concerning to me. It's the memorandum of agreement between the school board and Physicians Primary Care of Southwest Florida. I would ask that the school district reviews this contract and sees if there's another person or whatever you want to call it, the development that would be able to handle this, because Physicians Primary Care of Southwest Florida doesn't provide care to all of the members. In 2017, they sent out letters to all of their families that had children that were not on the correct vaccination schedule as provided by the CDC, whether they had autism, whether they had a delayed schedule recommended by their other physicians or preferred to choose their God-given immune system. So with that, they don't provide a curriculum because they are supposed to guide you in what's the clinical structure of their program. They don't provide a full spectrum of health care. They only provide a specific spectrum of health care for a specific amount of people. That's not inclusive. The other thing that we wanted to bring up today was the Early Head Start Childcare Partnership. It seems like more and more in the school district, not just you, but across the board, is becoming more of a daycare provider than it is a educator. And the problem with starting these programs so early and so young is that the education that we're giving the children isn't actually, my children were in these programs, so I can tell you from firsthand experience. These are not education systems. These are free daycare provided. And we're not looking for free daycare because the more we provide these services in this particular aspect of the curriculum, what it would be considered curriculum, is the more these people drop their kids off from 5 o'clock in the morning, 6 o'clock in the morning, until 7 o'clock at night. And we have our kids in school for way too long. Your guys' job is to provide an education and not free childcare services. So if you could take those things into consideration tonight, and if you could also go into detail, it's for the hearing items. But there's some contracts that are being renewed for 15 years and one that's being renewed for five years. If you can discuss what the differentiation between those two is and why some are being reviewed for 15 years and some for five. And we know they're reviewed annually, but what the contract involves. Thank you.
Corey Die. Dr. Savage, great to see you out of the gate working to showcase our district. I'm sad that we didn't see anyone present, anyone else, present at Governor DeSantis' bill signing today. Board, at yesterday's meeting, you moved not only to decide how many companies you want to hear from, but you went on to select two organizations for the superintendent's search without ever providing public input. Those two things most definitely were actions. This prevented the public due time and the ability to agree with a lot of the concerns with Patrika and her role at the FSBA. This comes from the mistrust of the public with the school district and her. Her continuous bullying of employees, contractors like RMS, and questionable connections with Zelinski, owner of Integrity Builders, which was now arrested for a third time while the district continues to contract with his company. Her continuous bullying, attempting to intimidate and belittle the public, making disparaging remarks about the public and their opinion? I'm glad you all don't want to listen to the minority, that minority that only comes to these meetings when it suits them, that leave after they're done talking. They don't care what anyone else has to say. I'm glad to hear that, because we are not the minority. We can pack this place. Imagine what we can do at the ballot box. We have a larger influence of people than what most of you won your election by. While this district released all of the records of board members except Patrika's in the Alfie Oaks case, what is her obstruction to the process costing taxpayers?
Hi, my name's Robert Roper, otherwise known as Ward Cleaver. While this presentation is going to sound a lot like I have problems with the LGBTQ policies, it's not. It's about betrayal of trust. It's about loss of confidence in the board. It's about policies that are continually denied publicly but are virtually destroying at least one family. And that gentleman testified last year, causing unimaginable harm to that family. The Lee County School Board needs a workshop on how to restore trust of the stakeholders, the parents, and the citizens of Lee County. Why? I don't need to show you this poster, but this is the poster that was in the last Student Code of Conduct. Code of Conduct that clearly says, "All students are allowed to access the restrooms that are consistent with their gender identity." Yet publicly, we continually hear that that is not a policy. We can play semantics. Oh, it's guidance, it's not a policy. But when you put this on the wall of a school to the student, it's the rule. I was present when staff presented this policy. They clearly articulated, I could bring you the videos, that that was the policy in the Lee County School Board by staff, and it was presented to you. I could show you on video. But yet you consistently say there's no such policy. Number two, you purposely and intentionally tried to deceive me. I did a public information request about this form that is signed by the student and the equity coordinator, only excluding the parent. And I was sent a form with a parent's signature. And it was very clear, it was painfully clear. I knew who created the form. I started with that person. Even the then superintendent got in on the thing. It went through the FOIA process. It was closed with the wrong form. I reopened it, it was closed again with the wrong form. That is why there's a lack of trust. I don't know what's going to happen with the Student Code of Conduct. It was ratified at the last meeting. We'll first talk about inserting certain verbiage to make things better, and it makes me wonder what we have. We couldn't change the last one because it was ratified. This one's ratified. I hoped that it wouldn't be changed. I'm going to ask you to take action, make positive change. Be the transparent board that you claim to be publicly.
Will the following individuals please line up? Keith Olson, Yipram Dervahine, Melissa Hatter, Charles Christopher Daley.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and School Board members. My name is Stephanie House. And the people that preceded me already touched on a number of the topics I wanted to discuss. But primarily, it is already diversity in your school board's selection and administration. I've spoken to you before on that topic. Your superintendent selection, I want to know why the public wasn't included in that selection or in the selection process. We need to be informed. We need to be part of that selection committee. If you have a committee already in place, the NAACP wants to be part of that committee. Please include us. If not anybody else, I want to be part of that committee. As you know, I can be a little bit outspoken, and I want to be spoken up. Thank you. Also, the person that came up here and said they don't want CRT taught in school, that person needs to be a little bit more informed, too. That's a part of history. That past generation, they might not know what it's about, but the next generation coming up, they need to be informed. That's part of history. And that's everybody's history. That's American history. So please inform everybody that that needs to be taught in school. Also, you need a little bit more diversity in school. You have a committee called the Diversity Committee. That's in name only. Do something about that committee. Put not just bodies in there, but put some action in there. Teach everybody, that includes your staff members, what diversity is. That's not just a word. Again, that's action. That includes your school board members. We need to see a little bit more color in your administration. If not just starting at the head to trickle down, we want to see some teachers administration, teachers in that diversity also. And a little bit more I had in here, but I don't want to take up too much of my time. We don't only show up when we have a little issue going on. We show up all the time. And we show up when it's time to vote them in or take them out. And I know you hear me. I always got a little something to say. And like that military training I got, I don't need this microphone just for you to hear me. Y'all already know that. And if you don't know nothing else, I speak when I need to speak proper English, but I can break it down for you, too. The last name was H-O-U-S-E, and I'll be back again.
My name is Keith Olson, and I'm a resident of Lee County, and I have three grandchildren in District Five of the educational system. In recent school board meetings, two times ago at least, Ms. Giddens prophesied that CRT is likely to be a major issue coming up. And as her Christian brother, I'm not sure where that prophecy came from, but certainly showed to be accurate. In tonight's agenda, Category H under consent academic services, item number seventeen, deals with the approval of the collaboration agreement with Equal Opportunity Schools. Equal Opportunity Schools is a Seattle-based organization. Their mission reads, "To ensure that students of color and low-income students have equitable access to academically intense high school programs and to succeed at the highest levels." I am completely in agreement with providing access to all people, to all of our students. I am not in agreement, in fact, I'm in complete disagreement, that we should be providing equitable access. Those are very different concerns. Equal access means that we give every student of every color, of every socioeconomic level, based on merit, access to these higher-level programs. Equitable access means that certain numbers of different broad groups must be included in those programs. So equitable access supersedes merit. And equitable access, equity, is one of the foundational principles of CRT. And I'm very much concerned about critical race theory, not only how it's taught in the classroom, but also how it impacts the very process by which our schools operate. So I'm deeply concerned about that. The primary goal, rather, not the primary, but the first goal of the program is to fully close race and income participation gaps in these higher-level programs by fall 2021. That's in two months. And I'm very concerned about that. It can't be done unless there are these kind of artificial numbers applied to different groups. That must be included in these programs. So I encourage you to vote against that proposition.
Sir, will the following individuals please sign up? Charles Daley, Kristi DiVigeli, Darrell Slack.
Yeah, from there behind you in Lee High Acres, Florida. I'm against this critical race theory. It's a communist agenda. The Chinese, the Russians are happy that you're pushing this. You're screwing up our kids. Get with it, get rid of it. Second thing I got to say is, picking a superintendent, I think we need somebody with a business background, with an accounting background. We don't need all more academics people, they just screw it up. I've been coming to these meetings for seven, eight years. This is the worst board that I have ever seen. I wish some of your board members would resign. The one that wants to stop free speech, the one that wants critical race theories, time to go, time to go. This is America. This isn't Russia. This isn't China. Get with it. I'm tired of it. And again, I say, this is one of the worst boards. Seven, eight years I've come to these meetings, and this is a terrible, terrible board that I've seen. I wish you guys get with it. Thank you. God bless.
Hi, I'm Melissa Hatter. Welcome, Dr. Savage. Glad I have new life. Ladies, on January 20th, 2021, I sent you all an email regarding Statute 1001.43 with the detailed list of unauthorized booster expenditures from July 1st, 2020. Not one of you acknowledged the request for your compliance with law. We pay for a board attorney that did not advise all of your obligation to comply with this law, and whom one month later sent me a letter stating that the district nor board had any governance of the booster clubs or their financials, and that the matter was closed without providing any accountability. Yet earlier today, she cited the same statute and specifically addressed how it states the board is, in fact, responsible for fiscal management, receipts, expenditures of funds, creating policies, regulating fiscal management of booster clubs, and that administration at the schools is responsible for fundraising and fiscal responsibility as well. Mr. Simmons said, "Missteps." Really? No, sir. It was illegal and unethical activity, and the handling of the complaints and all that ensued were conducted in the same unscrupulous manner. He said, "It's hard to hold people accountable if they haven't been trained." I haven't been trained to not rob a bank or commit murder, yet I can assure you, if I was caught, I'd be prosecuted to the full extent of the law. Not to mention that most of what was portrayed today as new procedure actually existed in law, policy, and previous co-op guidelines. We needed enforcement more than new guidelines. Our district has a serious problem with accountability and taking ownership, as demonstrated in these absurd minimizations. I have the documentation proving none of the school board members, booster board officers, school administration, or district were ignorant of the law, statutes, guidelines, policies, or bylaws. It's called accountability, and I will continue demanding that all parties that did not comply with these obligations are held fully accountable. I'm hereby officially making a new complaint in light of the board attorney and district staff's public admission to noncompliance with the law and policy, and I hereby request that all parties that were involved in the correspondence and mishandling of the misappropriation of booster funds, complaints, retaliation, slander, tax fraud, falsified audit, and investigations are all held fully accountable immediately. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Charles Daley, Christopher Daley, to some. I came to sit here and complain to the board about human resources and the fact that us employees are not given the option to make changes to their specific days of when they work. I was surplus instead of another employee that I have seniority over. I am a 216, and she's a 196. I was told by a principal that it was irrelevant for me to even try, because HR said there's no way for me to become off the surplus list to take over the 196. I'm asking you, the board, as one of your fellow employees, that is sitting on a surplus list, to actually look into this. I do not feel like it's right, and I am pretty sure there are others just like me that are asking for the same thing but are scared to fight. Thank you.
Hello, Christine DiVigeli. So just a few things. First, I would like to acknowledge Dr. Savage and the way that he handled some of the more controversial changes that he made in his first week. We all make mistakes. What's important is that when we make a mistake, we own up to it, and we do whatever we can to fix it. From what I've heard, you've done that, so thank you. Ms. Vaughn, in June eighth briefing meeting, you said, "I'll share my political beliefs. I'm a Democrat. I'm a liberal. I believe that critical race theory is very important. And if we lose sight of that, as educators, we can't be a world-class education system." School Board Policy 1.05 clearly states the following. Board members must avoid conflicts of interest or the appearance thereof. Ms. Vaughn, your admittance of Democratic Party affiliation and leftist political viewpoints is a direct conflict of interest. Board members must vote on all matters presented to the board for action, except when a conflict of interest, as defined by the statute, arises. Ms. Vaughn, you violate this board policy every time you vote, based on the fact that you are guided by your political beliefs and ideals, as you clearly stated yourself. And number three, refrain from using the board position for personal benefit. It is no secret that lack of transparency is an issue with this board. So how can we be certain that Ms. Vaughn has never used her position to further her self-admitted Democratic agenda? Elizabeth Vaughn, I find you to be in direct violation of School Board Policy 1.05, and I request your formal resignation as District Seven School Board Member effective immediately. In the event you choose not to resign, I urge the board to terminate her term effective immediately. Thank you.
That's a tough act, though. Hey, my name's Darrell Slack. I'm here to speak on a multitude of items, actually. First, I want to express my disappointment and the disappointment of people I've spoken with, that the board decided to move forward with the voting on the FSBA contract without any public input. That's something we should have been able to speak on. The infighting and ethical complaint that was filed by one board member against another, it's been well-known around here, it's even making the news. I think it kind of makes you guys look a little not great. I think you either learn to work together, or learn to admit when it's not working, and show yourself the door. It's disappointing, and it's becoming embarrassing. Mr. Dai mentioned earlier intimidation of public, intimidation of parents by the board's specific board members. I love my law enforcement, I appreciate the job that all of them do. I find it quite shocking there are one, two, three, four armed guards here watching us. And when we clap, we get, you know, not-nice looks for clapping. I think that these four service members have much better things to do than listen to us. That's your guys' job, not theirs. Finally, as far as critical race theory goes, I think that we deserve a public condemnation or endorsement from each school member, school board member, sorry. I think it's really important. I hold a degree in history, it's my major. Teaching what happened during those terrible years is absolutely crucial to let our students know what happened. We should also teach that the United States has made amends for those horrible atrocities that were made, like no other nation has. It absolutely happened, and it's absolutely been addressed, and we're absolutely moving forward with it. We're thankful that Governor DeSantis has banned it. It's not really an issue right now. We don't have to worry about it. But we here in Southwest Florida, we don't control who's governor, we don't control who our congressman is. Miami, Tampa, Orlando, Jacksonville, they all have an input on the upper echelon of leadership of this state. They don't have an input here. We can control our own school board. Vote in your school board elections, find out what your school board members are doing, what they support, and vote accordingly. Don't just vote in upper echelon. History is important. What happened is important. But critical race theory specifically is a Marxist ideology, and it has no place in our schools whatsoever. Thank you, guys, for your time, and have a good night.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comment.
I think we still have one. Oh, Mr. Daley's coming up.
Superintendent Savage, board members, my name is Dr. Charles Daley. That's my boy there. How many of you, I don't have to ask that question, because every single one of you have children. I'm going to always be his spokesperson. I'm going to always be his father. You made a statement with the Pledge of Allegiance, "And justice, and justice for all." Thirty years ago, when I was a young boy like him, I sat and we challenged the opposing group to ensure that this district moves forward. This is not what I approved. You board members were elected. I sat on podiums with you as we all strive for offices. And one of the things that I heard every single one of you say, "If there's an issue, call me. If there's a problem, call me." Ms. Fisher, I respect the fact that I was able to contact-
able to contact you. Thank you so very much. And we ran against each other. Thank you so much. And I hope you don't get intimidated with the actions of the response of a grievance that implied that I contacted you for personal reasons, for political advantage. It is a blatant lie. Superintendent, I ask that you look into that measure, please. The only difference in a grievance, Mrs. Morgan, and an equity complaint, a grievance is one that is supported by the non-support of the union. An equity complaint deals with it all. Employment discrimination, age discrimination. My boy has seniority, and when you don't fully explain to these young administrators to my right, the proper way of informing them, if there's an issue, you have to give the senior person the choice of choosing whether to go to the 196 or whether to go to the 216. If that employee says, "I'll take the 216," case solved. But if that employee says, "I would prefer the 196," the decision goes to the most senior person that stated in the contract.
Mr. Daley, thank you.
I pray for you, not said.
No clapping, please. I believe now, Madam Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for coming. We do appreciate that you come. We are here to listen to what you have to say. Dr. Savage, assuming that you are going to look into some of what was said here today, I would appreciate that. So, thank you both, Mr. Daley, Dr. Daley, as well as, as far as the search committee, we will be having a meeting with the, it will be a briefing on the search committee, which we will have a presentation, and public input will be on that particular day. We will have another meeting for that as well, and so we will include that. And then going forward, we will have many, many opportunities for community to be involved in the search process. That is something that is, we are definitely demanding upon whoever does get that contract, because we want to hear what you all have to say from all walks of this area of Lee County. So, we will be reaching out to you to get engaged, to be involved, and we hope, you know, keep looking at the website, because I know Ms. Gittens works on that, but we're going to try to make sure that we keep every single thing on that website so that you will know exactly what's taking place, the time that is taking place, how to get engaged, and we want you to be engaged in that process. So, please know that we definitely want you there.
Okay, so, right now, you're out of order, and this is your first warning. Please, Mr. Adai.
Thank you. And that is it. We just appreciate you being here, and as I said, we are here to listen. So, moving on, the next, the next is the approval of the action items in the agenda under consent.
Madam Chair, if I could just address one, I think there was a comment with regards to charter schools and the difference between-
Did you want to do that now or with the, when we get to that portion?
Well, if I could just explain that pursuant to the statute, there are charter schools that are considered high-performing charter schools, and those charter schools can have a contract that is 15 years.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure if you were going to do it then or now, so thank you for doing that. Next, as I said, next on the approval is action items. The documents for the action items listed under consent is made available to the board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all of that materials, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business, tabled items, portion of the agenda? Ms. Giavennelli?
I have one, and then I apologize, I didn't actually send an email, and I am in support of it, but I want to pull it to have discussion on it so that it's an opportunity for the community to understand, and it's, I believe it's H17, is that H?
H17?
Yes, and that is the approval of the collaboration agreement with equal opportunity schools. We were, you know, I want to have a discussion on that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica? Yes, please. J6. Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, please, for discussion, H14.
Ms. Gittens?
Thank you, L8.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
I have none.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda consent items with the exception of the pulled items H17, J6, H14, and L8?
I'll move that we accept the consent agenda with the exception of H14, H17, J6, and L8.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Okay, so, it was motion by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Ms. Gittens. Has everybody had an opportunity? Ms. Thomas, are we waiting for somebody? Okay, 7-0, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have four, four pulls to address. So, Dr. Savage, please read your recommendations for pulled item H17.
Do you want me to go in order, Madam Chair, H14?
Yeah, I will ask you, and then you can-
Very good.
Yes.
So, H14?
Seventeen.
Okay, seventeen, very well. H17, recommended action, approval of the collaboration agreement with equal opportunity schools to provide support and assistance to the school leadership at the district's 15 high schools. This agreement provides a continuation of the work that was started in 2021 school year for the 2122 school year.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt Dr. Savage's recommendation? Ms. Vaughn?
I move to adopt Dr. Savage's recommendation to approve the agreement with equal opportunity schools.
Thank you, and seconded by Ms. Morgan? Thank you. And discussion, and Ms. Giavennelli, I'm going to let you start that, please.
Yes. Okay, so this is actually only a one-year contract. We actually had a whole briefing on this today, and I actually had pulled this item at a prior meeting because we didn't know anything about it. Today, we were, we had a great briefing on it, and it's required by the Department of Ed to, to meet the achievement gaps that are lacking in our district, and we're trying to attempt that with this, this program. It's not curriculum, so it's just ways to help all students meet their highest expectations and achievement in schools. So, I just wanted to, I am in support of it at this time, and I will be closely watching how, watching the data and see how this, how we come out at the end of the next year regarding this with our students, because I still feel that we need to do this earlier than later in high school. I think we need to be addressing these issues in like 3rd grade and in middle school as well. So, I'm, I'm hoping that with the plans in place, this will align middle school and at least high school, and, and we help students have a career path and whatever that may look like, but at least that they'll have their diploma and can do anything they want to once they graduate. So, I'm in support of that this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Giavennelli. Is there any, Ms. Gittens?
Okay, in case you didn't see this afternoon, I'm in support of it, and here's why. We are constantly saying we are working towards being an A school. We are working towards being world-class and the head of the pack and the leader of the pack. Part of the thing that keeps us from getting there is the achievement gap. Within that achievement gap are students of all colors, size, race, hair, everything within that achievement gap. So, if we don't shrink this, we don't get to the A. We don't get to be world-class. And one of the ways that this program helps those children in that gap that are academically not up to standard, then that's what this program is about, the children in the gap. And if some people are going to look at it one way through one set of glasses and another one through another set of eyes, it's the children in the gap. They need our help, and we need their help to become an A and world-class school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, I want to reiterate some of the things that my board colleagues have just said. Frankly, a month ago, I think it was, when this was first brought up, it was an item that I pulled. I still have a few reservations about it, and my reservations stem from the fact that I feel, and actually I know this from 38 years in, in the classroom, that we need to help these children at a much younger age. As a matter of fact, someone earlier spoke about Head Start and made a comment that it was a babysitting service. No, I've been on that committee. I've studied quality daycare, quality, I'm sorry, early learning programs, and for some of the-
Please, no laughing. Thank you.
It's okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Vaughn, please.
And for some of these, for some of these programs, we really do need to think about equity, and I also wanted to touch on that in regard to this EOS program and what they presented this afternoon, which tipped my thinking on the program to let's, let's allow it to have another year in our schools and see, and see what happens and if we make the strides in a non-COVID year. So, I think some people, and I don't know who among you, but some people kind of live in a bubble of their own group of people, and they don't understand that, that the kind of people, that the situations that we have in Lee County school encompasses every kind of situation. And it's not about, as Ms. Gittens said, it's not about race or ethnicity. It's about children and their families that don't have the wherewithal to, to advance. And for, and I'll add one other thing. I have worked for quite a long time with teenagers who are in the foster care system, and some of the young mothers that I've worked with, and also children that have no family and have been in group homes. All of these children need a voice. All of them need a voice, and this is what this program provides, equity for those that aren't as fortunate as some other people. So, that's why I am going to support it.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Anyone else? Ms. Giavennelli?
Just real quick, also, I just want to add, I mean, this program is, will be supports in place for all, and that all means all, and it's not just a certain group of students. And so, that was shown to us today as well, so I wanted to, it was something I forgot to say earlier, and I wanted to make sure other, everyone understands, we're not just catering to a certain group of people. We're actually, we're here to educate all students, and that's what this is about. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that part, too, because that's fairly important. It is about all of our children.
Yeah.
Is there, are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we will then go ahead and take a, a hand vote on this. Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
Aye.
Ms. Giavennelli?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
And yes for myself. 7-0 carries. Thank you. Okay, so, the next one, Dr. Savage, could you please read your recommendation for pulled item H14?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Please.
The, this is a recommended action for the approval of the contract with Elk Mountain Academy, Inc., Clearview Academy, to provide combined educational behavioral and residential services for the 2122 school year for a total cost not to exceed $255,500.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt Dr. Savage's recommendation?
I'll move that we adopt Dr. Savage's recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. In a second, please.
I second it.
Thank you, Ms. Giavennelli. And discussion, and Ms. Fisher, I'm going to let you start because you pulled this.
Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair, before we begin discussion, I just want to remind the board that there are further considerations, so be mindful when you may have in your discussion.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm aware of that. So, I pulled this item the other day at the workshop, asking questions about it, and we are paying $255,500 a school year for this program in Idaho, and I had asked the question about how are we checking out the effectiveness and efficiency of this program? And I had done some research. I know to date, we have paid over $700,000 with this contract, and there have been reports that have been negative and concerning. So, I had asked the question about how does staff evaluate these programs, and do they check with the authorities in, in that state to see what their reputation is in, in working with children? So, I did not get that information, so I thought I would request it again at this time.
Thank you. Are there any other, well, Mr. Prey Bruno, is there, by law, what is our-
Obligation.
Obligation, thank you, for this particular case.
This particular case, you know, we go through our normal course in terms of reviewing the-
As far as approving it or not approving it, because-
You do need-
Something that we must do. That's my question.
Is there a timeline?
Yeah.
Well, there is a timeline, and it is time-sensitive. You do have, without going into the details, you do have an individual that requires these services for very specific reasons, and I do understand from my conversation with staff today that there is ongoing communication with the service provider. They do check with, check in to see how this individual is doing, as well as verify that the requirements and the goals and objectives continue to be met on a monthly basis. I do know that staff has also traveled there to verify with their eyes and speak to directly the individuals who are providing the services and the care. Based on the, the issues regarding this individual, this is an appropriate placement.
Thank you. Ms. Giavennelli, do you have something to say?
Well, I just wanted to say, I had asked for additional information because I really didn't know anything about this, so, and I haven't received any information, you know, just trying to get some information on it in general. It wasn't, it wasn't really clear.
Okay, and then I'm going to go to Ms. Fisher, Ms. Patrica, Ms.- Okay, and then I'm going to go to Ms. Fisher, Ms. Patrica, Ms. Vaughn, and then Ms. Gittens.
So then I just want, now, my question really was not necessarily about this particular case, but what is our responsibility when we enter into a contract with a facility like that, to check that? And I thought that when we asked, they said they had not physically visited that place.
I hadn't, I had an opportunity to speak to staff today with regards to this, and it's my understanding that they have visited, that they do monthly checks as well, and there's ongoing communication between the facility and staff. My recommendation to the board would be to have a one-on-one to get as many of your questions answered with regards to this particular case because it is very, very unique.
And I understand that, but as our board attorney, I would, I would like to know if we have any clear data and clear information about the reputation of this particular facility that we've entered into this contract with more than three times? And, you know, from a local official agency? How do we request that?
And if I may, before I go to Ms. Patrica, Dr. Savage, it looks like you have something to share?
Yes, I do have Ms. Teresa Bowen, who is our ESE Director, who's here today and could speak to more detail, at least to possibly give a little bit more information, if you would be amenable to that.
Would that be all right with the board for Ms. Bowen to come up and speak? Please.
And with being careful with the FERPA.
Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen.
Good evening, Board, and Dr. Savage, and Mr. Dupree Bruno. As Mr. Dupree Bruno said, we did have a conversation today regarding that request that you made, Ms. Fisher, about how we go about looking into these types of programs. And we do, I obviously wasn't a part of the original looking into this program, but we do have all of that information regarding the program at Clearview. So we look at those pieces that are defined by boards, by licensure. So they are licensed by the Department of Public Health and Human Services. They do hold accreditation for behavioral health. They also hold accreditation with Cognia, which is also associated with the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Council on Accreditation and School Improvement. And they also are accredited by CARF. So I can read you, they have the highest scores from CARF that you can get. And I'll read you a clip of what is in their accreditation decision there. It says, "Clearview Horizon, Inc., staff members provide excellent counseling, nursing, educational, and case management services through its residential treatment program for adolescent girls. There is strong evidence to support that the entire team is dedicated to providing quality services in a respectful manner. Students speak highly of the organization and its staff members and report that they are consistently treated with respect and dignity." This is a large report. I did provide that to Mr. Dupree Bruno so that she was able to share that with you. Additionally, we do do site visits, and that was something that I talked a little bit about yesterday, that we have been to the site and we have observed the student receiving services as well. We are in constant communication with that school. With our Assistant Director is mainly the one that is in charge of the students' programming. So she is in constant contact with them regarding grades, courses, how she's doing her progress, so that we know at any time if there is not considerable progress or something that we need to be concerned about, we call an IEP team meeting. So that is the way that this type of placement would work, is that, and we are the district contracts to provide those services on an individual education plan. And so they carry those out at the school site. That would include any behavior plan, anything like that. And if there are concerns or changes that are needed, that is done with a district team and the parents.
So then I just have a couple of other questions. How much do these site visits cost us from Florida to Idaho? And how many times have you been there, Ms. Bowen?
I have not personally been there. I was, I was not in the role that would have been involved with us at the time that the site visit was completed. Ms. Ellinger did attend that site visit. She is now our Assistant Director. She was a coordinator at the time. And she visited that. I don't have, I can get you how much that cost. I don't have that on me. However, these are costs associated with the additional expense of providing services to a student with disability and are generally budgeted under IDEA.
And so is there an anticipated length of time that it would take for this therapy to show improvement? Because it's, we're in a fourth year now, and-
So-
I just, yeah.
Ms. Fisher, I think that just because we don't want to go too much into the needs and the assessments and how long the student's going to receive services and those kind of things because of FERPA, I would feel more comfortable if we had one-on-ones to discuss this so that you can have all of your answers and you can go into detail in terms of what the student requires and how long, the length of time, and why, and the assessments and all of that.
Yeah, and I'd like to see the documents that say that this facility is approved and accredited. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Patrica, and then Ms. Vaughn, and then Ms. Gittens.
Never mind. My questions have been answered. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Vaughn?
I had some huge concerns about this since, you know, you were addressing us yesterday. The cost seems out of control. Surely, there are similar programs that are closer to Lee County. This is, I did look up the website. This appears to be a religious institution, heavy duty on that. And I think that as a school district, this is, we, we need to, if we're going to be paying that kind of exorbitant fees for proper care for one of our students, that we need to look into a more secular, maybe a public institution to provide similar services. There were some disturbing accounts online. I can't take those for 100% truth because, just, just because of the nature of the people that were online making, making statements about their experiences. And all of them were horrible experiences in that particular institution. Ms. Fisher pulled this item. I would, I would actually like to see it tabled until we can all get more information, the confidential information, so that we can better understand why we are spending this kind of money for the treatment that is being received.
Okay, can, I will come, I will come back to you, Ms. Vaughn. I'm going to have Ms. Gittens, and then Ms. Patrica will come back to you again. Ms. Gittens?
Okay, I have one question. Was the site selected by the family or by the district? Do we know that, and can we ask that?
Yeah, so I was wondering.
Yeah, I think Ms. Bowen can answer that question.
The site was selected by the district. You, you, there are not many locations of these type of facilities. When you look at some of the pieces that I know Ms. Dupree Bruno and I talked about earlier, it is a very small percentage of places that offer services such as this. And when you are then on top of that, having to look at accreditation for schooling and licensure and all of those things, what comes down, whittles down into a very, very small pool. And now we have entered into a situation where age factors in. And we have investigated every other opportunity when it comes to looking at residential services. There is not one that is going to meet those, all of those requirements that is in this state. We have taken every opportunity to take in anybody that will give us information about other programs. We, there is a kind of a listserv out there that we investigated prior to this meeting, this last meeting we had, just to be able to have all of that information at the table for this IEP team to consider. So this IEP team considered all of that information, and it was not a rubber-stamped decision that the student would be attending a residential program. It was that IEP team's decision that they needed this in order to be educated with that free, appropriate, public education. And from there, we have to then, you know, negotiate a contract and find a location. And this, this is where the student has been served for the last few years. And we do have, the end of the contract is June 30th, and we have a student that is currently being served and requires services as of July 1.
Okay, so the final part that I have to say is, because of the age limit, because of the time limit of June 30th, because of the specialized services, we cannot afford to not pass this because where would the student land on July 1? The unfortunate piece of this is that, and the issue to me, is that we were not informed and spoken to about this prior to getting here. I really regret having this conversation at the dais due to the sensitivity of this item. And I would just hope that my colleagues understand because of age and time and specialization, we need to move on.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Patrica?
So I remember the first time I approved, it was either this item or an item very similar to this when I first was seated on the board. And I remember being shocked by the dollar amount, and I remember being shocked by the location, and I remember being shocked by so much of it. And then I received an explanation similar to the one that you've provided to us tonight, but it was away from the dais, so it was more extensive. If I may, ask the superintendent a question through the chair?
Yes, please.
Dr. Savage, do you know which year of this contract we're in? Is it year three, four, or five?
I may have to rely on staff. Ms. Bowen, are you aware?
This, I believe, might be the fourth.
That sounds about right, because it was around that time that I was properly seated on the board, and I saw it, and I was shocked.
But there, I'm sorry, there were other contracts with residential facilities. This is the only one we currently have in place. And they were for far more than this one. So that's probably the one that you're speaking of. I think it was well over $400,000.
Okay, so this is not new to this board. And if I may suggest, you know, I'm prepared to move on this in support of it tonight, and I believe time is of the essence. If I may suggest a recess so that my colleagues can gather whatever confidential information they need to make them comfortable with making a vote tonight?
It's not necessary for me. I don't know with anyone else.
I think that, Ms. Dupree Bruno, this is something that we have to act on tonight.
We, we do. The contract is going to expire and everything else. And we do have to act, the board has to act on this.
Okay, thank you. And then, did you have some?
Just real quick, I'm prepared to move forward. I don't, I, sometimes we just need to be, our memory needs to be refreshed, that's all, you know? And getting this at the last minute, I mean, this contract, we really could have signed it a month ago. So it did, you know, we're really waiting to the last, you know, second on it, so. So I don't have a problem moving forward. I don't, I can get information later. It's-
Thank you, Ms. Javonelli.
I understand the sensitivity.
So, Ms. Vaughn? I'm going to bring that back to you because you asked it out.
I do not want to see a child put in harm's way, in jeopardy. However, I have no idea of the background information on, on this child, and apparently a few people do. I will very reluctantly support it, but I would also like to say that in the future, when we have big dollar amounts such as this, we can't wait till the last minute. We, we need to have time. We can't assume that the board is just going to rubber stamp everything. We need to have time to get, to get information.
Thank you. I'll take that into consideration when scheduling the next IEP meeting. This last one did take approximately over seven days and more than 36 hours, whereas a typical IEP meeting is one to two.
Well, you know, I, I know how those things work. I was in a school for a long time. However, considering the dollar amount and the stakes here, there just has to be the prior planning. So, I mean, just to put it bluntly, but thank you for your work on it.
Bowen, thank you very much for stepping up here and speaking to us.
Does Ms. Fisher want a recess?
Ms. Fisher, do you need time to?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't, but I will not be supporting this because it's, and having nothing to do, I don't know the student. I just know the reputation of the place, and they've changed their name. And, and I will not support something where I might be putting a child in any kind of danger.
And Mrs. Fisher, I know the allegations that are out there that were shared, and a lot of that is on social media, and we do have responses from the, the school, and they do have attorneys looking at that information. It is misinformation.
I'm not on social media, so I don't even know what you're talking about, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen. So if there are no further, further conversations or discussion, then I'm going to ask for a hand vote on this item, which is H-14. And I will start with Ms. Morgan, please.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Javonelli?
I'm going to vote no.
Ms. Fisher?
No.
And I'm going to vote yes. So it's five to two, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next one. Dr. Savage, would you please read your recommendation for PULD Item L-8?
Yes, Madam Chair. L-8 Recommended Action Approval for Phase One Pre-Construction Budget Estimate in the Amount of $9,132,700 for the Quadruple A, formerly known as the K Elementary and N-N Middle Pre-K 8 School, South Zone. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all necessary documents.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. And may I get a motion to approve? Ms. Patrica?
I move that we approve the superintendent's recommendation with regard to the $9,132,700 for AAAA, Pre-K Through Aids School.
Thank you. Second, please, Ms. Morgan? Okay, so motion by Ms. Patrica, second by Ms. Morgan, and Ms. Gittens, if you will, you brought this one to us?
Yes, I did. Thank you. I have stated before, and I will continue to state, that unless I have enough information and data on an item, I will not vote on it. Quadruple A is a question in my mind. I have heard different amounts, I've heard, and we discussed it today. But I've, we have heard 72 million, 75, 84, 90. We've heard 15% increase, we've heard 20% increase in, in products. And I still have asked for, for several months, the growth in capacity numbers and the algorithm that was used to say the need for this and other capital projects. So, and, and just me personally, I cannot support $9 million on a project that is, I don't know in black and white, the need for it. I haven't been shown those. I asked again today and I was told that I would get it later. So perhaps after I see the data, see the need, and weigh it with the other needs that we have in the district, then perhaps I can support it. At this point, I cannot. And thank you.
Thank you. Or is there any other discussion on this, please? No other discussion. I will say that we have been, been speaking about this for quite some time. And as far as given the estimates and the difference, it's because of the fact that we, it's, some of this stuff is unknown because of the fact that, you know, the cost of certain items. Dr. Savage, did you have something to share?
I can just speak to Ms. Gittens' concern very briefly. I think this might be helpful. This, just to remind everyone, this is our Phase 1 cost. So this is really an amended contract, taking the prior contracts with work that's already taking place, amending and clarifying those contracts. This in no way binds us to begin or proceed with our Phase 2. Essentially, because of the rising costs for some construction materials, when we get to the point where we complete our Phase 1, which really includes a lot of the design work, those are things that are not as impacted, permitting and so forth, things that allow us to get ready for our Phase 2, this in no way says that we must approve the Phase 2. That gives the board another moment in time where we can either commence and make a strategic decision of if we want to commence as we had planned or if the costs, which can fluctuate at that point in time, are of concern or not. This just allows the work that is already continuing to continue with these amended contracts.
May I please just...
Thank you. Yes, please, Ms. Gittens?
This afternoon, and I see Mr. Rick and Barker there, and I know you're gonna say that we must get, I'm sorry for speaking for you, but the conversation today is, and I totally understand, the cost of materials is continuing to rise. And as you stated earlier today, if we don't purchase the steel now, then we will have a difficult time moving forward. In all actuality, I don't believe it should move forward. And I never have, and that's just the way I feel about it. I feel that our priorities are out of sync. And if we continue from 72, 75, 84, I did the math even on the 72. And at a 30% increase in supplies, it goes over 90. And I can't support that because it's like, once you get in there and you've got $9 million of steel sitting there, then you're gonna come back to us and say, "We've gotta move. We got $9 million worth of steel."
If I may, the board and the previous superintendent, you've all approved these dollars, $6 million of it. The only ask you're seeing tonight is the $4 million to do an early procurement for the steel. Originally, the approval you as a board approved was for the Phase 1 total project cost of NN Middle School and K Elementary. So you've all already approved $6 million.
And I believe I voted down. I haven't voted on anything.
But I'm just saying, as a board, the board had approved it. And so what this is doing is merging the design costs into one contract so we can go for the COPS funding for one site. And our experts in the construction field, in order to get the materials to meet the schedule for their student seat demands, we have to release it now. Normally, I would go and bring you a total project cost at Phase 2, which would be the total project cost for the job. But if I do not order this $4 million worth of steel now, then that school will not be done for '23.
So may I ask a question? If the school is not done in 2023, can you support those students' seats by placing two portables at two schools?
I cannot answer that. I am not planning. That was all done by the planning department and sent to the state for confirmation.
Okay, well, it's my understanding with the numbers that are needed. May I just finish my...
Yes, so there's, should not be having conversation back and forth with Mr. Rick and Barker. So go ahead and please state whatever you would like to say.
Well, my point is that if it's going to, the costs keep rising for this. We don't know where it's going to end. In the first place, I feel that it was, it was a non-priority. That's my own opinion, and I know others don't agree with me. There are higher priorities in the district that need to be done. And that's, that's just the way I feel about it. So if we can, in one area, take care of a situation for a year or two by putting 20 portables, then we can place two portables in another area to save us all of this money. So that's, I, I haven't voted on anything for it since it came, and I will not until I, it's proven to me that we really need it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens. Ms. Javonelli?
Today, we had a budget meeting and wasn't this in the budget? This school was in the budget?
Yes, it is, ma'am.
The, the 10-year plan.
That is correct.
So, and I think it's within the five-year plan, really, part of that, but...
That is, that is correct.
We're gonna need schools. There's a lot of communities being built, Tree Line all the way to Bonita Springs right now. So we are gonna need the schools. So I'm in support of it this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments or conversations? Seeing none, I will go ahead and then ask for a hand vote on this. Thank you, Mr. Rick and Barker. Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Aye.
Ms. Javonelli?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
And, yes, so six to one, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, moving to the next one. And I thank the administrators that have been sitting out here, so thank you for being patient. Dr. Savage, can you please read your recommendation for pulled item J6?
Yes, Madam Chair. J6, Recommended Action Approval of Administrative Recommendations as Presented.
Thank you. May I get a, a motion to move it?
I move that we pass the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I second that.
Okay. Were you gonna pull it?
I was the poll.
Yeah, now I'm gonna have discussion.
I know, but I'd like to amend the motion to approve the interim superintendent's recommendations for administrative personnel appointments as found in item J6, except the position of coordinator superintendent's office. That's the only one I need to discuss.
Okay. So, did you get that, Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, so do I have a motion? Do I have a first on that?
So she made a motion till then.
She made a motion. Do I need a second?
And I second.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. And discussion, and...
The discussion will only be on the amendment. You gotta get through that part first. So does the board agree with amending the original motion to what Ms. Patrica said in terms of approving everything except for the last item?
Thank you. So do, is there a discussion on the motion? That was the amended motion to approve all of the names on this with the exception of the very last one? Can we speak to Ms. Patrica first? Ms. Patrica?
I, I don't, I don't have any questions or concerns with any item except the last one. I'd like to approve them and congratulate the people in the room and then move on to discussion with the board on the last item. I believe that's how we handled it previously with a superintendent appointment at, superintendent, a principal's appointment at one of our schools. So I'm, I'm just trying to be efficient.
Thank you. So, Ms. Vaughn?
I would like some information from Mrs. Patrica on her objection to Holly Matthews moving from Sunshine Elementary Assistant Principal to coordinator in the superintendent's office.
That's the discussion we're having right now?
I've just, okay.
We just call for the, call for the vote. That's what I would say.
Yeah, we're right here for the vote, just for the first part. And that's the...
To eliminate that one.
No, that, just on those, and then we'll come back and bring that second one back.
I will, I will make a motion next for that position.
We will bring that other one back.
Just trying to deal with the first five together.
In voting for only those first ones, do I not have the right to know why it's, it's, it's part of this?
But we're on it right now.
Understand, we're not vote, we're voting for all of them except, and I would just as soon vote for all of them, and I want to know why we're separating one person.
You can make that decision by your vote.
Ms. DePree Bruno, could you please explain that this is a amendment, amended motion? And we are voting on the amended motion?
Never mind. I get it. I get it.
And then we'll bring it back. So if I may have a, a hand vote on the amended motion to approve all of them but the last one on the list. Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
Aye.
Ms. Javonelli?
No.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
And aye. So motion carries, four to three. Dr. Savage, did you want to?
Recognize the other individuals?
Recognize, yes, please.
Absolutely. We do have some individuals here in attendance today. So the first one that I would like...
I'm sorry. Ms. DePree Bruno? I'm sorry, Dr. Savage.
That's right.
Me to confuse you.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Board members should not be speaking to each other while one person has the poll.
I'm calling on Ms. DePree Bruno. Thank you, Ms. Gittens. So this motion was, this motion was just done. So do we go ahead and move to the second one before he announces?
So what you voted on was to amend the original motion, which is now you're back to your motion with, as amended, which is the motion to accept Dr. Savage's recommendation with the exception of the last item. So that is what you're going to vote on now.
Okay, thank you.
Remember, amendments are always a two-step process. First, you vote on the amendment, then you vote on the amended motion.
So can I please get a, so, so now we have a motion to adopt Dr. Savage's recommendation with the exception of the one last. May I get a... Can I get somebody to move on that?
It's already been moved and seconded.
So we can have another vote on it then?
Right. If there's no discussion, you can go ahead and move forward with the vote.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher? Do you approve it? I'm on, we're approving this motion now.
The motion that is on the floor...
I'm going back again, and we're gonna approve this. First, we approved the motion, now we're gonna approve it as stated.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Javonelli?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
And aye. Motion carries. Now, Dr. Savage.
Madam Chair, the count, motion carries by what?
It's four to three, motion carries. And then I'm gonna ask Dr. Savage to please, before we move to the next one, to please go ahead and congratulate.
So we'd like to recognize those administrators in attendance here. The first is Danielle Swickola, who is going in Exceptional Student Education Coordinator for Exceptional Student Education. We also have Michael Licata from Heights Elementary, from Dean of Student Discipline to Hector A. Cafarrada Jr., Elementary Assistant Principal. We also have Michael Hour from the Professional Development Department, Learning and Leadership Teacher to Island Coast High School Assistant Principal. Those are the administrators in attendance.
Thank you so much, and congratulations. And we will take a brief pause, so if you would like to exit, please feel free to do so. But congratulations. Thank you.
You already proved, so I just write this one at the same time. It's two separate items.
Yep.
Pause is over.
It's the one that really improved at the beginning, and then these are the ones that were just a good pause. That's why they're not seeing, they're not seeing names because of that. They're both in.
Ms. Patrica?
I move that we adopt superintendent's recommendation with regard to administrative personnel appointment, coordinator superintendent's office.
You've heard the motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Fisher? Thank you. And discussion, Ms. Patrica?
So I, I had a very brief discussion with superintendent. You're aware that I can't support this this evening. And I, I guess my explanation is I don't, I don't understand how this appointment fits into the larger scheme or the larger plan. Our board chair reads at the ever, the beginning of every meeting that some of the items have been briefed or workshopped. I'm not, I, I haven't had a lengthy discussion with you about this. I don't believe you have even met with your chiefs as a group to have a lengthy discussion about this. I think the best way I can explain it to you, Dr. Savage, is, you know, when you get a puzzle, you see the picture on the outside of the box, and then you take the pieces and you put them together. You have given me a piece of the puzzle without giving me the picture. So I, I need to understand the full breadth of...
Could you speak through me?
I need to understand the full breadth of what, what picture you're trying to create here before I can support it.
Ms. Patrica? Speak to me, please.
Those, those are my comments.
Mr. Di, please. Next time, Mr. Di, please.
All right. I, I do support this recommendation by the superintendent. I'm not sure how Ms. Patrica knows whether or not the chiefs have been briefed on this. I do know from meeting with Dr. Savage last, last week, as I believe most of us did, I discussed with him, you know, what are some of the things that you would like to accomplish during the time that you are our superintendent? And I'm going to emphasize our superintendent, that's by law. I heard Ms. Patrica earlier at the end of the last meeting or at, during the last meeting, say that she couldn't support anything done by an interim superintendent to do a reorganization. This is not a complete reorganization that we are being asked to approve in 24 or 48 hours. This is an individual who is on our governance team, who felt, feels the need to have a coordinator in his, in his office. I believe that we have executive assistants that have the title coordinator. I, I can think of one or two who have, have that, have that title as executive assistants. I respect the superintendent's right to appoint, if he feels necessary, a coordinator, especially due to the fact that at this time, this district has a lot on their plate, as evidenced by the length of the meetings that we have had in the last month or two. And this superintendent has been in place now for a few hours past one week. I remember that Ms. Patrica, who's objecting to this during the time of the last superintendent, chided fellow board members for opposing moves like this from Dr. Atkins. And I would ask that she has respect for our new superintendent and not address him like, about a puzzle... about a puzzle piece, like she's talking to a third grader. So I will support the-
Point of order.
Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Vaughn? Please.
Madam Chair, point of order. I think we need a three-minute recess until we can get ourselves together.
Let me finish my statement, please. I'm nearly done.
There's a point of order that has been made. Ms., Madam Chair, can you please rule on the point of order?
I think that, I would like Ms. Vaughn to finish speaking, but please speak to me.
And I'm speaking to the board.
Speak through the chair.
Just address it through me.
Speak through the chair.
I'm speaking to the board. I would like to see, I will amend what I said. All of us sitting here on the dais to have respect for our superintendent and for anybody else who addresses us, and I will be supporting this because this is a relatively small movement from an assistant principal to a coordinator in our superintendent's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. I'm going to have Ms. Gittens and then Ms. Morgan, please.
Okay. And, and in my opinion, Ms. Vaughn was referring to what Ms. Patrica already said, and she was not interrupted by a point of order, just for the record. My comment on it is in agreement with Ms. Vaughn. I have sat here, meeting after meeting, and been told that my job is not to tell the superintendent how to make decisions, that the superintendent makes decisions and we do policy. We have been around this about appointments before, that we had question about, and that's what we were told. So I do believe, it's kind of, you know, to make it simple, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And if we have a new superintendent, and I will tell you what I was told for the last three years, that we need to stay in our lane.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. And Ms. Morgan, please.
Well, I guess you all are at an advantage that I don't have. I haven't had my meeting with the superintendent. So I had a brief meeting with him this afternoon, I guess around 5:30 or so, and asked him what this was about, and he told me that I should know about it because it was something that had been discussed in cabinet. I know nothing about this reorg, or this position in the superintendent's plan, and all I'm asking is that, and there are changes, I think it is appropriate for the superintendent to provide information about changes he's planning to make and what the, and what the context is in terms of his broader plan, which I don't know. So I hope that the superintendent's office will be able to arrange a time for me to meet with him. In the meantime, I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Ms. Javonelli?
Um, so there's a lot of changes here on, on this, good for cause, that I did not speak to the superintendent on, but this happens all the time. So I think it's not uncommon. I think that we need to give the superintendent the respect and allow him to have employees around him that he trusts, and I think that's what this person is for him. I don't even know who this person is, never met them in my life, but I'm going to respect the judgment of the superintendent. You know, I can recall that our last hire was a board attorney, and that was a five to two vote, that was also derailed after the fact, after we voted. And I believe that's what this attempt is, to derail the such, the respect of the superintendent of the vote that we've, we've done as a board. So I will be supporting this. I'm not, I, I do not know if he's met with all his cabinet. I would hope so, but I don't know how, Ms. Patrica has information that I don't have, but it seems to, that's always been the case for the last four and a half years. And so, again, she has more information than I have. So I'm statutorily, Ms. Bruno, does, does the superintendent have the authority to make changes that he feels comfortable with?
So the hiring recommendations, transfer recommendations of the superintendent must be followed by the board unless there is a concern about moral turpitude or the person's ability to do the job.
Hiring.
Okay, so, and, and I believe Ms. Matthews has, does not have any issues with that. So I'm going to, I haven't heard anything, so I am going to support this this evening. Thank you.
This is a transfer. Transfers also fall under that legal guidance.
And Ms. Fisher? Did you have any comments?
No comment right now.
Okay, and, and I'm just going to share, I know I had a conversation with Dr. Savage earlier today about this, and when I was, the only thing that, when you and I spoke about it, I mean, I know we're going to support, but my, what I see here when I'm looking at the job description, the qualification of the, the person for the coordinator is less than the qualification for the secretary, for the superintendent. And then I know that, and it's saying that they are going to be supervising the office staff, which, supervising and overseeing support staff in the office of the superintendent. And I know when we had our conversation, you said that was not part of that, but it is definitely stated in their, in their job description, and they only need a high school diploma where the secretary needs an associate degree. I know they have more than that, but I'm just, yes, please?
I'm happy to respond to that.
Thank you.
So this was the board-approved job description by, under Dr. Atkins' regime. So this is not a new job description, this is an existing job description, so all the qualifications and descriptions that you have are simply what was in print on that board-approved job description. With that said, certainly we'll be looking at all the different duties and core functions, and we can, at a later date, come back and outline any clarifications, any red line edits, anything that we would recommend in a future time. We'd be happy to do that. But under the current circumstances, this coordinator position functions much like any other administrative coordinator function around the district. We have a number of them. They, they serve a vital function in, in leadership, just to speak specifically to this candidate. Tremendous school leader, tremendous talent, and a great opportunity to serve our district out in the schools. In fact, I would tell you that the leaders out in our schools know full well what our schools are dealing with, and so the opportunity to enhance our team in a position in a very similar fashion to what Dr. Atkins had, had said that he needed and staffed, is a great opportunity for us to really enhance, not take away from anyone on our current team. Our team is fantastic in the superintendent's office. They are fantastic. In one week, I have been so impressed with the quality of what they do, but I would understand that I have a very compressed summer. Any move we make, if we were to delay, the issue is then that causes a subsequent delay for any replacement of staff. So say, you know, the most sensitive thing we do for school leaders is we want to give them every opportunity to staff, so those folks can attend professional development, they can contribute to the work that is ahead. It is a compressed summer, it is certainly reluctant to bring any items such as this nature. We want lots and lots of time. Unfortunately, I've only been on the job one week, and there's a lot of work still to do. So I hope that that helps clarify at least some of the comments that were made so far. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
No, thank you. And again, it has nothing to do with the individual person, it could be Joe whatever. It's just the fact that when I'm looking at two different job descriptions, they kind of overlap so much, and just, you know, I just wanted to share that with you as well. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say that we have personnel recommendations literally at every board meeting. And, and unless, we, we all know from our training with FSBA that unless we have good cause to question one, we approve the superintendent's recommendations. We say what, he says how. We say, yes, this is, you know, we need personnel, he says who. That's not our purview. So I will be supporting this this evening.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions? No? Okay, then if I, I'm sorry, Ms. Javonelli?
Not, just a, just a comment. It's, we, it's up to us to make our appointment with the superintendent. I, last week, sent an email and asked to see him because I heard that he was already having meetings with him. I wanted, out of respect, I waited because I didn't know, I knew he'd be very busy this whole, this first week, but he carved out some time for me. So it's, it's up to us and our ownership to meet with the superintendent, and that's what I did. And that's how I got my appointment, so.
No, thank you. And again, we are here to make sure, you know, to support him and make sure that, you know, we move the district forward, so I appreciate everybody's comments. And if I could go ahead, then please, and get a hand vote on, on this item, I would appreciate it. Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
Nay.
Yes.
Sorry.
I know, I'm just trying to rest the meeting, I'm sorry.
Ms. Javonelli?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
And, yes, so six to one, motion carries. Can, I've had a request for a, a five-minute break. Does, would anybody need a five-minute break?
Madam Chair, can we please move on the lateness of the hour? I think we need to.
Thank, thank you.
I guess, are we, it's up to you.
No, thank you. Dr. Savage, did you want to announce your appointment? Your second appointment?
The individual's not here.
But could you please still?
We did already recognize everyone who's in attendance today.
But go ahead and recognize the person as well.
Absolutely. It is my privilege to also acknowledge Ms. Holly Matthews, Sunshine Elementary Assistant Principal, Moving to the Superintendent's Office Coordinator in the Superintendent's Office.
Thank you. We are moving to public hearings. Dr. Savage, please present your recommendation for this evening's public items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Recommended actions, P1, approval of the contract for renewal with Heritage Charter Academy Incorporated, Heritage Charter Academy of Cape Coral, serving grades K through eight for a five-year term from July 1st, 2021 through June, June 30th, 2026. P2, approval of the charter contract for renewal with the City of Cape Coral, Oasis Middle School, serving grades six through eight for a 15-year term from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2036. P3, approval of the contract for renewal with DJB Technical Academy Incorporated, Donna J. Beasley Technical Academy, serving grades nine through 12 for a 15-year term from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2036. And P4, approval of the contract for renewal with the Heights Charter School Incorporated, Harlem Heights Community Charter School, serving grades K through five for a five-year term from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2026.
Thank you. We will now recess to regular school board meeting and open the public hearing as indicated. The public hearing this evening is to consider, one, approval of the contract for renewal with Heritage Charter Academy, Inc., doing business as Heritage Charter Academy of Cape Coral, serving grades K through eight for a five-year term from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2026. Two, approval of, excuse me, approval of the contract for renewal with the City of Cape Coral, doing business as Oasis Middle School, serving grades six through eight for a 15-year term from July 1st through 2021 through June 30th, 2036. Approval of the contract for renewal of DJB Technical Academy, Inc., doing business as Donna B. Beasley Technical Academy, serving grades nine through 12 for a 15-year term from July 1st through 2021 through June 30th, 2036. Number four, approval of the contract for renewal with the Heights Charter School, Inc., doing business as Harlem Heights Community Charter School, serving grades K5 through, for a five-year term from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2026. Phew. At, at this time, the public will invite, be invited to speak for these four items. The time allowed for the comment is three minutes. Is there anyone on the right side that would like to speak? On these four items? Is there anyone on the left side that would like to speak? Is there anyone in the back that would like to speak? Want to make sure I cover all bases? Please state your name.
Daniela Dai.
Wait, I don't think you're on yet.
I'll just be louder.
There you go.
Daniela Dai, I just had questions, if you can go into more explanation. I know you said 15 years for a high achieving school versus a five years. So if you could just go into more detail about what that means and what it is, why there's three at 15, one at five, and what the qualifications are. If you could go into more detail, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. DePree Bruno? I will ask you to-
So let me pull up the statute really fast.
For Dr. Savage, did you have some information?
We actually do have a staff member, Donna Schroll, who works with our charter schools, who is available if the board would have a question on that.
Okay. Do you all mind if she steps up to the, the microphone to speak on that? Please, Ms. Scholl.
Dr. Donna Schroll.
Dr. Scholl's role. Thank you, welcome.
Good evening.
Ms. Fisher, button, and make sure you're on, please. I think, I think I heard you, Dr. Scholl. Go ahead, it sounds like you're on.
Is it on?
Yeah. Well, I heard you, I heard the button push. Ms. Stella's going to help you.
I believe the question was about a 15-year term for charter contracts. There are, of the four schools, there are two of them who have applied for a 15-year term. One of those schools is Oasis Middle School, that's a municipal school owned and operated by the City of Cape Coral. It is just ending a 15-year charter, and its application asked for another 15-year charter. Statutorily, there are two parts or two sections in statute which would allow Oasis to have a 15-year contract. I believe they're both in section 1002.33, and the first states that as a municipal charter school, or owned by the City of Cape Coral, or any public entity, that a charter school can apply for and is eligible for a 15-year contract. So that is in statute. The second reason that they are able to apply for a 15-year contract is because they are a high-performing charter school. They meet all the requirements set forth by the FDOE to be considered as a high-performing school, and one of the benefits of being a high-performing charter school is that they can extend their contract into a 15-year term.
Thank you so very much, really appreciate it. We just want to make sure that we get the information out to the public. Okay, is there anyone else that, oh, Ms. DePree Bruno?
If I could just add, because I think this is, adds to what Ms. Scholl said in terms Second, I just lost my, where I was.
High performance or statute?
To provide the definition, but I just lost it, I'm sorry. I'll find it again.
All right. So is there anyone else out there in the audience or in the way back that would like to speak on these items? Seeing none, I will now close this public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting of June 20, 22nd, 2021. Dr. Savage, please reinstate your recommendations for this evening's public items.
My pleasure, Madam Chair.
And we will go one, one at a time. Thank you.
One at a time, that's right.
Yes, please.
P1, approval of the contract for renewal with Heritage Charter Academy Incorporated, Heritage Charter Academy of Cape Coral.
Thank you. You have heard the superintendent's recommendation that the contract for the renewal of Heritage Charter Academy, Inc., doing business as Heritage Charter Academy of Cape Coral, serving grades K through eight for a five-year term from July 1st, 2021 through June- June 30, 2026. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the contract renewal with Heritage Charter Academy.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens, may I have a second? Thank you. Ms. Vaughn? And could you please vote? Please record your vote. Okay, seven zero, motion carries. Thank you. Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Would you please reinstate your recommendations for number two?
Yes, Madam Chair. P2, approval of the charter contract for renewal with the City of Cape Coral, doing business as Oasis Middle School.
Okay. You have heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approves the contract for renewal with the City of Cape Coral, doing business as Oasis Middle School, serving grades six through eight for a 15-year term from July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2036. Board members, is there a motion to approve? Ms. Vaughn?
I move to approve the contract renewal with the City of Cape Coral for Oasis Middle School for a 15-year term from July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2036.
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn, and seconded by Ms. Gittens. Thank you, Ms. Gittens. And please record your vote. And motion carries, seven zero. Dr. Savage, please reinstate your recommendation for item three.
Madam Chair, P3, approval of the contract for renewal with DJB Technical Academy Incorporated, doing business as Donna J. Beasley Technical Academy.
You have heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approves the contract for renewal with DJB Technical Academy, Inc., doing business as Donna J. Beasley Technical Academy, serving grades nine through 12 for a 15-year term from July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2036. Board members, is there a motion to approve? Ms. Morgan?
I move we approve the contract for renewal with DJB Technical Academy, doing business as Donna J. Beasley Technical Academy, serving grades nine through 12 for a 15-year term from July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2036.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan, and may I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Gittens, and please record your vote. Seven zero, motion carries. Thank you very much. Dr. Savage, please reinstate your recommendation for item number four.
Yes, Madam Chair. P4, approval of the contract for renewal with the Heights Charter School Incorporated, doing business as Harlem Heights Community Charter School.
Thank you. You have heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approves the contract for renewal with the Heights Charter School, Inc., doing business as Harlem Heights Community Charter Schools, serving grades K through five for a five-year term from July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2026. Board members, is there a motion to approve this item?
I'll move to the... We approve the contract for renewal with the Heights Charter School, Inc., doing business as Harlem Heights Community Charter School.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher? May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. And please record your vote. Ms. Fisher? Thank you. Seven zero, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, we're on to other business, which is board member comments. And I'm going to start with Ms. Giovanni.
Can you come back to me, please? Thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
Thank you.
Could you start, please?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I want to thank staff today for the presentations. They were all very thorough and informative and an example of the hard work that our staff does each and every day, not only in concluding this past school year, but preparing for the next. I'm really excited about the summer feeding programs and particularly the one in partnership with Cape Coral Parks and Rec at Paul Sanborn Park. I know that last year, they had multiple kids there every day, and it looks like it's turning out the same this year. I want to offer... Oh, I do want to say that I do hope we will take another look at the district calendar. I noticed that many districts have managed to meet the day requirement and finish the semester before the holiday break, which I think then gives the students and the teachers an opportunity to feel a little bit of relief during that break. So I hope we will come... Give that another look. And also, I would agree with Ms. Morgan that we should have students on the calendar committee. And I know some student advisory members who would be happy to participate. So we are looking at... There was conversation today about the career and tech programs, the East Lee Tech, and it looked like there was some board interest in moving that timeline up. And I certainly agree with that, along with the Cape Coral Tech renovation proposals, which are much needed in my community of Cape Coral and very much supported by the business community. And also, I suggest that we take another look at the Public Service Academy, which serves the five-county area and prepares our firefighters, our EMTs, and our other law enforcement. And we could almost use some of the medical programs in that same facility because the work is all similar and connected. Finally, I just want to give my wishes for staff, students, and parents to relax, renew, and refresh, and stay well this summer. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Giovanni?
I'm still writing my notes. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
I don't really have much to report. We've spent so much time together lately. We're very aware of each other's activities because most of them are taking place here at the table. I would like to comment on the Golden Apple banquet. I feel like a lot of the work that we do can be difficult, but the Golden Apple banquet, to me, is always a reminder of why we do what we do, to see the teachers. I mean, this is my fifth year attending, and I heard two of the best speeches I've heard in five years. I mean, they were just phenomenal. So I thank the foundation for continuing to recognize not just the teachers who win the award, but the fact that they're representative of fantastic teachers across the district. I would like to add to the parking lot for board discussion, engaging the doctor that Ms. Morgan mentioned earlier today. He gave a presentation in a breakout session at FSBA regarding 10 laws of board governance, or something along those lines. I'd like to add that to the parking lot for board discussion. I think those are my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Giovanni, are you finished writing your notes?
Well, not really, but I'll come back to it.
Shall I come back?
No, it's okay. I just was going to mention the Golden Apple event. It was a wonderful event. And the presentations again today were... I would agree with Ms. Fisher. They were great. And the SOS program, I know that starts this summer, and that will be really good, too. And I'm excited for the kids for that. It's going to be a short break, but I hope that everybody has a safe summer. I wanted to have Dr. Savage address the Mr. Daly's, the surplus pool, and get back with him on that. No one mentioned that, but you could clearly tell that he was very upset. And my heart went out to him for that because I don't really understand the... What he was referring to, the 196 and 216 and stuff like that. I think it's above my pay grade. But so I just... And that was one thing. And then Mrs. House mentioned a couple of things that I brought up that I think is very important, and I want to bring that back around regarding the committee for the hiring of the superintendent. I feel that they should have been... The public should have been involved in that process. I brought it up several times, but this board didn't have that appetite. They want, I think, want to wait till after the search firm is formed. But I felt that the public should have had more of an input on that during that process. And now we're down to two, and they're not going to be involved in that at all. And I don't agree with that, and I'm just going to go on record for that. Also, she also brought up EDACT. And I do not think EDACT is a diverse enough. There's issues there that... And I brought it up several times to other people. I do not think that the LGBT has enough representation on there as well. And I think that we need to really seriously look at that EDACT group and make sure that it is diverse, and so that everyone feels like they're adequately represented. Because I think that that's going to be key going forward with the issues that are coming down federally. And so I think we need to really be proactive instead of reactive. And that's... We've been that way too many times. So I also have a report, and I'm going to read my report. "I am happy to report that I've been exonerated from all false allegations that were lodged against me in May of 2019. The state of Florida found no probable cause behind the complaint, proving the allegations made against me were unfounded. Over the last two years, I've been subjected to false accusations that were orchestrated by a fellow board member, along with an employee of the superintendent who retains their position as chief at our district. The board member who was involved confessed to her actions once it was discovered that it was her documents that were shared to Jane Cuckle and the news media outlets. In her attempts to justify her acts of the months of badgering and orchestrating lies against me, she emailed the board a letter with her excuses and publicly gave a weak statement in June 4, 2019, of her actions. The other individual who retains chief position admitted in a board meeting in the summer of 2019 that she authorized the unlawful use of the watermarking documents against board members. These acts, under Florida state and federal statutes, are a violation. The aggressive, unlawful orchestrated acts perpetrated against me not only were intended to harm me, but also private citizens, some who are advocates for many in our community. It is known that the individuals that were being protected were campaign advisors, contributors, and protectors of this board member. Several individuals have come forward to plead with me to proceed with exposing all this corruption. After careful consideration, I've decided that I am going to submit my complaint to the governor to investigate this board member on her unethical acts against myself and others. I was told something very poignant this weekend. If this can happen to you, imagine what they do to us." This statement was made to me by an employee. I have a duty and responsibility to stand by the constitution of the state of Florida, in which I was elected to do, and protect policies and statutes that include protecting students and employees and citizens of our county. I will continue to advocate for those rights. The main problem with this board is that we have not had an appetite to root out the corruption. And they prefer to false... To give a false sense of appearance, that everything is fine and dandy. But when individuals are colluding and orchestrating false allegations against elected officials and private citizens, it needs to be exposed. Although I have no authority over the employees of the superintendent, I would pray that it would be a significant matter significantly important to him to look into. Thank you for listening to me, and I'd like you to know that I will always be here to fight for what's ethical and right. People's indifference is the best breeding ground for corruption to grow. Delia Fiera. I want everybody to have a great summer, and I look forward to the new school year in 2021. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Giovanni. Please don't clap. Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Okay. I'm still writing. Can you come back? I'm sorry. We needed a little levity.
No, it's you. It's all you.
Okay. All right. First of all, I thank you for letting me do the value adjustment board. I went to the first meeting this morning, and very interesting. I learned a lot. Walked out as vice chair, whatever that means, but there weren't a whole lot of us, so it was okay. But I did learn a lot, and I do have some questions that I raised, and I will bring back to the board at some time about our 40% that we pay for running of the value adjustment board. And one of the things we're going to do is onboarding. A few of us are going to attend some of the meetings, the sessions, where people have complaints about their term notices and all of that. So I'm looking forward to that and finding things that I can bring back to the board and help us to do better. I'm going to bring, in a future date, hopefully the next meeting, some pictures and some information about a program that we piloted called ELEC, or East Lee County Reads. And we actually, during the pandemic, partnered with a couple of churches on Sanibel and with our reading department, Kimberly Busby, I believe is her name. And yes, Busby. And she was excellent. And what we did was set up a Zoom meeting during centers at certain classes, and we piloted it. So when the teacher is working with this group, and this group is doing this, one group was reading digitally with one of our readers from one of the churches in Sanibel. And Temple Bat Yom was one, and I'm not even going to try. Sanibel Christian, I always mess it up. Yes, Congregational Church. But I'll be bringing that, and I personally want to invite them, some of the members, to one of our meetings, just to kind of show them off. And I hope that it can spread, and we are going to talk about how it went and all that. But I've heard great things, and I saw some of the pictures of the Zoom meeting. It was really, really cool to see, you know, a lady sitting there, and she's reading to kids, and across the room, the teacher's doing something else. So I have said over and over again that, as horrible as COVID has been, it has created another way of communication and another way of reaching each other. And I hope that we continue with that. Ms. Morgan, are you going to talk about the chamber event?
No.
Okay. Will you? No, I'll leave it to you. Okay. All right. Well, the three of us, as you can tell, went to the Lehigh Chamber event, where we participated in the giving awards to the Teachers of the Year in the East Zone area. So that was very good, very nice evening, met a lot of the teachers and administrators. And congratulations to those that received awards, not just the teachers, but all of our first responders and firefighters and police and all of that. It was really a nice event. Golden Apple, I think I was so excited about Golden Apple because I was out with people in a social setting. It was just very exciting to be there, to see old friends and to see... Meet new friends and to see them receive their awards. If you get a chance to watch the speeches, you will laugh, you will cry, the whole gamut. It was really, really excellent. We had our last meeting of East Lee Education Co-op, and we went back over our... I'll take this down for a minute. We went back over our goals that we had set a year ago. And it was interesting to see the things that we had accomplished and the things that we didn't accomplish that were right back on there and revising and reworking what we're going to do. So you'll be hearing more about... So you'll be hearing more about that. I agree with Mr. Daly. His son, I worked with him before, very hardworking person. And unfortunately, I have to say, that's not the only situation that I've heard about that. I do understand that there are two sides to every story, but when you continually hear about the surplus list and, and the things that happen, I understand, I've been on it before. So it is a difficult thing to deal with and you're second guessing yourself and we don't need really good employees to second guess themselves. So I am hoping that there will be a follow-up. And just briefly, Ms. Giavonelli, 196 is the number of days they work and two, or 216. So.
I kind of figured that.
Anyway, just in case. I wanted to respond to a couple of the public comment items, but basically I'm just going to say, I, when I worked in Tampa and we used to do this program called Walk a Mile in My Shoes and it was a hospital. And so I was in charge of, you know, the employee, what can I say, getting along in a sense and understanding what everybody else did. So once a year, I would have a Walk a Mile in My Shoes situation. And you could sign up to switch places with somebody that worked in a department that you did business with. So say, for example, when you're doing, working in OR and you have like a, you have someone on the OR table and you have a sample that has to be tested before you close them up again, I'm being really gross, but. So the people in OR were always saying, these people in pathology are just so slow. They are so terrible. They don't do their job, whatever. So during Walk a Mile in My Shoes, I would have an OR person spend the day in pathology and vice versa. They had a much better understanding of what it was like to be in pathology and have all these body parts lined up and everybody at the door knocking for them. I say that to say, it may look easy, it may look cushy sitting up here and, you know, we're sitting up here with the, the big chair and all of that stuff. Walk a mile in our shoes, walk a mile in mine. I wish we could do that sometimes, I really do. I wish we could have community leaders to sign up to sit here and for the day have an opportunity to have to make the same decisions and to take care of 95,000 students and thousands of employees and, and keep everybody happy because you can't do that. You have to stay true to what you believe is right. And for the people that are concerned about me being one way or the other, all I can say is I, I stay true to myself and to my God in every decision that I make. This afternoon, the last thing I want to say this afternoon, during the presentation about the Equality Schools, Mrs. Robry from, the principal from East Lee County High School gave a quote and I begged her to give it to me and she did send it. And I think it kind of capsulizes a lot of the things and understanding what we do and how we have to take care of so many people. And the quote is, "Equality is leaving the door open for anyone who has the means to approach it." Equality is leaving the door open for anyone who has the means to approach it. Equity is ensuring there's a pathway to that door for those who need it. And if you need the quote, I'll share it with you. I'll put it on my website or something. Thank you all, teachers. If you, I know you only got like six weeks if you're, unless if you're not having summer school. Take one weekend, go to the beach, put your feet up or something, get your nails and hair done and just do whatever it is you want to do for a few days and don't think about us at all because we're going to need you in top shape when we come back in a few weeks. And thank you for everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Kittens. Ms. Vaughn?
Well, Ms. Kittens, I hope in the program you, you described about Walk a Mile, that you didn't switch places with the brain surgeon. But anyway.
Okay. I'm going to ask you about that later because I'm really not sure.
Well, if I were on the table and you came in and switched places, I would be worried. Okay?
Okay. My favorite was the morgue. I have to tell you that.
Well, okay. Anyway.
Ms. Vaughn?
I wanted to address EDAC for, for a moment because I am the board liaison to EDAC and I'm, I'm going to take exception to what my board colleagues said about lack of diversity because I find that it is an exceptionally, it's, it's called the Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee. And we do have different races, different ethnicities, including people from other countries. We have, you know, we don't take a poll on this, but I know that we have at least two people that are in the LGBTQ community. So I really find that it is a very diverse board. And the thing that I love, being a former English teacher with a lot of conversation, I love conversation. These people in this group, they love to share their opinions and actually we have, I know of at least one person who's very, is very conservative as, as well. So it is extremely diverse. And what I would like to say to Ms. House is that I hope that you and actually everybody here will consider becoming a member of one of our board advisory committees. If you go to, we're always looking for, for people for these and as a matter of fact, we are right now advertising for, for next year because we have finished this, this year of meetings. Couple committees may have summer meetings, but basically we are done for this school year. The easiest thing is, last time I checked the district website, there's, you know, kind of the banners that go across and, and one of the learn more about it's is about the advisory committees. So if you just click on learn more about it and you can submit an application, we have the EDAC and curriculum and finance and a variety of committees that you might be interested in. So, so please take that under consideration. And speaking of EDAC, we met a week ago and EDAC did come up with some suggestions, I've already mentioned this to the board, that, actually recommendations that we will be bringing forth to the board. The, the language of it has, had to be tweaked a little to, to make it more concise and Mr. Edie is the staff, Mr. Jared Edie is the staff liaison and he will be running those things by, by district staff and so we will be, I'll be bringing hopefully in the next few weeks to the, to the board. Like most of us here on, on the dais, I went to the Golden Apple banquet to recognize our, our teachers and have the same reaction. Everybody looked lovely. It, it's, it's a great, it's a great night. And I agree, I think somebody said about the speeches, all of the speeches by the teachers and some of the sponsors who are on stage were just heartwarming. And one of the best things is each teacher has one of his or her students introduce him or her. And it was so cute. The little kindergarteners, they, they've learned to read really well. And can you imagine being five or six years old and stepping up on a little stepstool and addressing this huge room of people? That's, that's pretty daunting. So it really was great. I thank everybody in the schools for all the work that they, that they did this year. And that includes all the support staff, the bus drivers, the, the custodians, the food workers, et cetera. But I always have a special place in my heart for the teachers since I devoted 38 years to that pursuit. And I know that, I have to say that many years ago, when I first started teaching, it was a profession, it never, teachers never made a lot of money, but it was a profession and for some of us, a calling that got a lot of respect. And it's very disturbing to me personally and also as a member of the board, that I have received some comments by email that to me are extremely disrespectful to, to our teachers, to the point of, and this is extreme, wanting cameras in all classrooms so that parents could watch the teachers and make sure that they weren't teaching anything that parents might not approve of. I, I really find that extreme. I find it quite shocking and I, I just hope that some of the people that are having misgivings and mistrust toward our dedicated teachers, who were especially dedicated this year with many, many teachers teaching a group of students on the screen at home in a hybrid class and a group of students in the classroom. I'm, I'm sure that probably somewhere on YouTube, the, the Golden Apple speeches must be out there somewhere and that you just listen to what these teachers, these dedicated teachers, a couple of them career changers, how they felt about their students and the schools and just, just really think twice about your, really, as I said, my opinion and I always tell the truth, even if it sometimes often doesn't sit right with some people. But it may make you rethink just a little bit. I do wish all of the teachers and all of the staff members in, in the schools, because I know most of the people here don't get the full summer, which of course is a shortened summer this year. A restful, peaceful summer. We had a, actually it was a very small retirement ceremony here in, in the boardroom last night and I did get to meet some of the new retirees that had put in up to, I think, 36 years. And I wish all the retirees as, as well, happy, enjoyable retirement, well earned. You may do like me and actually retire and then find a new chapter in, in your life or many new, new chapters. And finally, when Dr. Savage speaks, I hope he will tell us just a little bit about the adventure this afternoon of, of the press conference with, with the governor. Did you, I was hoping you'd have some pictures up, up on this, on the screen, but I, I don't see them. Put some out for us, please, or I'm sure it'll be on the news. And that's all I have to say for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Morgan?
I have no comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And my comments will be brief. Everybody pretty much has spoken and told the story of our exciting week. And I just want to remind everybody, and I think Ms. Fisher had already mentioned this, about the summer feeding programs. We want to make sure that there's like 70 some odd schools, locations for these kids to go up to the age of 18 in order to eat. We want to make sure that everybody is fed this summer. So please, if you know of any families or anybody that's in need of that, it's, the list is on the website. It is vitally important. Also, summer school started. I know, because my grandkids are in it, so they're excited about that. We're going to keep them going. SOS started, as Ms. Giavonelli stated, that's great for our kids. Today, they, I was able to greet the Summer Leadership Summit and that is our, our leaders in the district and they all were meeting today and I think tomorrow to reset for the upcoming year. So they're still working very diligently, you know, for you out there. So I just wanted you to know. And then, I know somebody had made a comment about Dr. Savage being at the, the governor's press conference today. That was scheduled for last week. We were scheduled to go there. They changed that and they changed it to today. So the superintendent was able to go. We were not able to be by his side because we were here at a meeting. So I just wanted to put that out there. That's why we were not standing with him. Let's see, what else? And then I had, was speaking with Mr. Malloy and they're going to be trying to get out to the neighborhoods and trying to get into wherever we can get into to speak to the residents, especially where we know there's a lot of children that attend our schools to see what is it that we can do for you all? How can we help you? And so if anybody knows of places where we can go and seek information, please let us know so that way we can be out there and do what we need to do for the community. And with that, I just wish everybody a great summer and thank you for all that you do. We will still be here, so please feel free to reach out at any time. And with that, Ms. DePree Bruno, do you have any comments?
Just three things really quick, just to clarify with regards to the charter school. I did find what I wanted to share.
Thank you.
To be a high performing charter school, you need to have at least two school grades of A and no B, no school grade below B during the last three previous years. So that's the first thing. Also, you must have received an unqualified opinion on your annual financial audit, no issues with the financial audit. And also that there was no emergency with regards to the financial conditions of the charter school. So that's how you qualify to be a high performing charter school. The other thing is that I have gotten some requests from the public in terms of the status of my board education law certification. I am working on that. It's going to take some time. It's not going to happen this year, hopefully by next year. You are required to do continuing legal education as well as get points. I get points for everything that I do, so that's the easy part. Getting the continuing legal education is more difficult because it must be in the area of education law, which is few and far between. However, I am happy to report that I have been accepted to be on the education law committee with the Florida Bar. So that should also open up some additional opportunities for me to get those educational law credits. I just want to also add to something that Ms. Vaughn said, just for clarification with regards to board advisory committees. At this time, if you join a board advisory committee, you can participate in those meetings via Zoom. So that's something hopefully that the public will be happy to hear because of the changes upcoming law that the governor will be signing. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I, I did forget one thing for Dr. Savage. I, I hope that you got what I was talking about with the surplus, checking into that when I said that. Okay, thank you. Because I know that, that was not the only case. I have heard of others and longevity was the main factor, how long they have been here and that they are on those lists. So I know we're always in need of good teachers, great teachers. So I, I know it's being thrown on you, but I really would appreciate that.
Certainly look into all that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And then I will go to, if you have any comments, please?
Thank you. I do have a few. Just want to say for our Golden Apple, it's, even though it's been mentioned many times, it's so rare that we really elevate our teachers to that level of elegance in such a visible way. The foundation, I just have to say, they really go all out and they really allow our teachers to shine. These teachers really serve as champions for all teachers. So while there may be six, they really do then that entire year highlight they really do then, that entire year, highlight all the work of our teachers, and they do show, it's just a wonderful celebration. I can't think of a better one. We kicked off our Summer Leadership Summit today with our school-based leaders, and I just want to say, it's excellent professional development with the Marzano High Reliability Schools, but that really tells you what leaders are all about. Well, they're wrapping up one year, they're getting ready to get right into the next year. It's just a tribute to our leaders and to the team that put that training together. It was also just a real great pleasure to have Dr. Amy Desamore fulfill my executive role on this team earlier today at the board briefing. I was shocked to find out, despite the fact that she's very long-tenured and in high-level leadership positions here in the district, that she's never had that opportunity to serve in that capacity. So it was a great privilege to give her that opportunity after just such tremendous service to our district. So I was very grateful to her to fill in so that I could be there to, on behalf of our entire board and our district, to greet Governor DeSantis. So, but before I even get to that part, I just want to say, I'm also so grateful for our staff, who are sitting out here, never quite sure exactly what all questions may come, and so just to have that flexibility to provide those on-demand answers so we can make informed decisions, to watch these meetings, just so grateful to all of you who are here to do that as well. And then, just as I was asked, Governor DeSantis, well, it wasn't just Governor DeSantis, it was Commissioner Cork and numerous legislators. They came to Three Oaks Middle, and they were joined by our student debate teams from, I believe it was Colusa Middle, Three Oaks Middle, and Island Coast High School, from my recollection. And it was real education in action. Those students will not soon forget watching their civics education come before their eyes, bills being signed into law. In fact, one of our students even spoke at the event and did an excellent job. So I just want to kind of also use that as a moment to say that, you know, of the three educational bills that were signed, one of them was a K-12 civics bill. And that, I just want to lastly thank our public, not just the public that come here to speak, but those who take the time to watch these meetings, to attend these meetings, who read through our various items, ask probing questions, and for those who really proudly exercise their free speech. That's democracy in action, and I felt it vital, on a day where we celebrate this new civics education, to also say that, you know, those who research our laws, participate actively in our governance activities, that demonstrates exactly why the civics education is so vital to our democracy. And our school board governance is a living example of that with your assistance. So thank you to all of you as well. And those are my comments for today.
Thank you. Thank you very much for sharing that. The next scheduled meetings of the board, on Monday, July 26, there will be a special meeting at 11:00 a.m., followed by a board workshop at 1:00 p.m. On Tuesday, July 27, there will be a board briefing at 1:00 p.m., followed by a special meeting at 5:05 p.m., and an action meeting at 6:00. At this point, having no other business to come before this body and seeing no objections, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night.